Tonight, we will welcome the candidates running for the Livonia City Council, followed by the candidates running for the City of Livonia Mayor. We thank the City of Livonia for allowing us to use their facilities for this public education event. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate running for any office. The League does take positions on issues after careful study, so you may see our name attached to an issue that we are advocating for or opposing. Membership in the League is open to all citizens who are at least 16 years old. So if you are interested in joining this public service organization, please let us know. Membership applications, and they look like this, are available here tonight on the table back there. Or you can go to our website at L W V Northwest Wayne dot org. The League's main mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation in government. One of the ways we do that is by having forums such as this one. The League has also prepared a nonpartisan voter guide, which can be found online at W W W dot vote four one one dot org. And we also have these bookmarks on the table available that have that address on them. By typing in your voting address, you can view the voter guide, the races on your ballot, and the candidates' responses to questions posed by the League. You can also find the link to the voter guide at our website, which again is L W V Northwestern Wayne dot org. These addresses are provided on these free bookmarks which are available, as I said, on the table. If you would like to ask questions of the candidates, and we certainly encourage this, please write your questions on a card and hand it to one of the ushers in the aisle. Our moderator will ask as many questions as time allows. Questions should be brief, to the point, and should not include any personal attack on the candidates. We reserve the right to screen the questions for duplication and clarity. At this time, we ask all our audience members to please be sure their cellphones are silenced. Thanks to the passage of Proposal Three in the last November election, voting in Michigan has become more convenient. Citizens who are not yet registered to vote can do so through Election Day. However, citizens must register in person at the Livonia City Clerk's office if they are registering less than 15 days before the election. Also, anyone can now request an absentee ballot for any reason, and using that absentee ballot can vote by mail or in person at the clerk's office before 8:00 P.M. on Election Day. A mail-in absentee ballot must be received by the clerk before 8:00 P.M. on Election Day. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. Now I would like to introduce you to our moderator, League member Sue Rowe, who will provide you with more details about tonight's forum.
Good evening. My name is Susan Rowe, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Northwest Wayne County. All 12 candidates running for the four seats on the Livonia City Council and the three candidates running for mayor have been invited to participate in tonight's forum. The top four vote-getters in the city council primary to be held on August 6th will advance to the general election in November, and the top two vote-getters in the mayoral primary will also advance. Because of the large number of city council candidates, we are splitting the group up into two 45-minute forums. City council candidates choose a number from a sack when they came into the auditorium, which has determined whether they are in the first or the second group and their placement onstage in that group. Following the second city council forum, we will hold a forum for the three mayoral candidates. There will be a short break in between forums to change seating positions. As Carrie said, our questions tonight are coming from the audience, and we also have received a number of questions emailed to us in advance. Each candidate in the city council forums will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response to all the questions, and a one-minute closing statement. We will rotate the order of the candidate who responds first. One of the 12 -- of the 12 city council candidates, 11 are here tonight. Mr. I believe Nicholas Turco was not able to join us. League members Judy Patrick and I believe Linda Curry are going to be our timers this evening. They will be holding up cards so that you know when your time is up. Let's begin with our first set of city council candidates. We will begin our opening statements with Mr. Weber.
Yeah.
And please introduce yourself and give your opening statement. And remember, one minute and the timer is right up front here.
Well, I just want to say that I'm glad that George Perez and Steve King are here with me. I think the three of us are noncookie-cutter candidates, and I really hope that we all make it, at least one of us. I also think that the chamber, it's really a lot more fair. They allow riding candidates. When I ran for mayor as a riding candidate, I mean, the League of Women Voters, I mean, and the Livonia Chamber is a lot more prejudicial. They won't allow riding candidates, and I think for something that's representative of the city, that's just not fair. I think you did mention that actually eight candidates advanced from the primary into the general, and then in the general election, four people were selected. But anyways, like, you know, I did run for mayor, and I lost. I'm writing a memoir about it. I've been a resident of Livonia since '72. I've been a Bible-believing Christian since 1979.
Time's up. Your time is up. Mr. Capola?
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity tonight to connect with the voters. Good evening. I'm Greg Capola. Livonia has been and continues to be a very well-run city, a reflection of decades of competent compassionate leadership. However, term limits create a critical lack of experience as seasoned council members turn out. What I provide to you is a clear choice, a choice for broad and deep experience. My civic service over the four years on the Zoni Board of Appeals currently has us chairman. Coupled with my 33 years in the private sector as a decision-maker and problem solver makes me a uniquely qualified candidate and, in my opinion, one of the best candidates before you tonight. The focus of my term and my promise to the citizens of Livonia is to build on the successes of the prior administrations and to take advantage of opportunities as they arise. What does that mean? It means I am unsure that the city's priorities are properly supported while looking for prospects for improvement. I am anxious to provide my thoughts and ideas this evening, and hope I persuade you to vote for me on August 6th and again in November. Thank you.
Mr. King?
Thank you, Susan. Hi, I'm Steve King. Just wanted to see some new faces, give you a little background. I was born in Wayne County. Excuse me, I've lived in Livonia since 1956, and I strive to be a positive force in all of my city and state, helping to improve the lives of my students as a teacher, my athletes as a coach, my neighborhood as a builder, and my school district as a trustee. I graduated from Valley High School, did my undergrad at Wayne State, and I received my master's from Madonna University. I served on the Livonia Y Board and became the sports director. I have been on the Art Commission, the LOCC, credit union board of directors, and have been inducted into the Livonia Hall of Fame. I have four children that all attended Livonia Public Schools, and I'm running for council to continue my service to the city, to ask questions and offer innovative solutions to challenges we face as a community. Please take the time to look at my website and blog, votesteveking.blogspot.com and stevekingmichigan.us. I don't see anybody writing.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, good evening. My name's Scott Barr. It's been my honor and privilege to be your councilman for the last four years. Livonia's home. I was born here, literally at St. Mary's Hospital. Went to school here. My wife and I specifically chose to raise our family here. That's why I'm so passionately committed to the long-term success of this community. I'm very grateful to say, as Greg said, that this has been a well-managed and well-run city for a long time. And that doesn't happen by accident. It requires a lot of courage and requires a lot of vigil, something that's true of any organization, but particularly in government. My council record includes examples of reducing costs, strengthening future finances, working with neighbors and developers to find win-win solutions, prioritizing public safety, strategic planning to encourage business investment, and on the fun side, my personal favor, bringing back Livonia's Christmas parade. Professionally, I've got an engineering background. After a long automotive career, I recently accepted a director position at Martin Mallow. And on the personal side, my wife and I have been married 17 years. We have four children, ages 15 to eight. Thanks for being here tonight. This is a great crowd, and I'm looking forward to the evening.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. My name is Gerald Perez, and I've been a Livonia resident since 1983. As your councilperson, I would hope to take on the following issues: the opioid crisis, recycling rates, roads, new and repair material, police pensions, city vehicles going hybrid or electric and carpooling, solar panel projects for city hall, libraries, rec center, parking lot lights, city park lights, and street lights using LED light bulbs, senior citizens property tax reduction 10% to 20% for 10 to 20 years of residency, business tax abatement or credit delay three to 10 years, and a suggestion for the new school miller so that they utilize some of that money for school projects. Please visit my Facebook page and my web page, Perez for Livonia City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first question this evening, we'll start with Mr. Weber. Many of you claim a focus on roads and infrastructure. This sounds good, but what specifically would you do to improve roads and the infrastructure, and how?
Well, I think one of the things that I would like is having a bike path that crisscrosses the whole Livonia. And when I was looking at the map, I came to the conclusion that the best route for this would be along 5 Mile and along Farmington. And I know people, you know, in cars, they don't like bikes, so I would put the lane on, you know, one side of 5 Mile, one side of Farmington. And for the bicycle, I would allow it, like, either direction, that you could travel in either direction. You know, and I think that would help out a lot. And I, you know, I also would like to mention that even though I wasn't endorsed by a right-to-life in Michigan, I am pro-life.
Sorry, time is up.
No, no, no.
Oh, 15 seconds. I'm sorry. Continue.
Yeah, well, yeah, just to finish that thought, I am pro-life, and I've been voted pro-life since I was age 18, and I'm age 59, so you can figure that out.
Mr. Capola, same question?
So roads and infrastructure, it's somewhat of a difficult issue. I think, you know, there's some misunderstanding regards to some of these roads that were around. The Livonia-controlled roads are mainly not the mild roads, some of the inner roads. 90% of the Livonia roads are good to excellent condition. What you're seeing, the bad roads, are the county roads and the state roads. They're not maintaining them. They're not repairing them. They're not giving them a focus that we, I think we all believe they need to have. From my perspective, what I will do as a council member is work with my fellow council members to encourage the county, our county officials, and our state officials to put more effort towards these roads so that we get our fair share of the funding, we get our fair share of the attention, and they maintain them instead of letting them get to the condition they do, and then it costs so much more money to fix.
Mr. King?
Yeah, like what was just said, there's Wayne County roads, there's state roads, there's city roads. We have a millage in the city which does deal with some of the issues in the neighborhoods, the sidewalks and the streets. I would look at that for any efficiencies or cost savings we could find. And a lot of the people that make these decisions that are Wayne County commissioners are either up in Lansing or in the county, they live right here in the city. And I would invite them to a public meeting to explain why we are not fixing the roads in the state. Our neighboring states have just raised their gas taxes to fix their roads. So we really need to really, really be honest about this. It's going to take money to fix it. Let's get it done. But let's have that conversation in public. And private partnerships can also go a long way in fixing roads. Especially, I would reach out, especially Merriman Road, the worst road on the planet. Stop.
I'll continue where you left off, because as Greg and Steve said, we have to distinguish between local and Wayne County-controlled roads, and they've done that already. The millage that we have in place works excellently. It's the model for the state. There's a lot of other communities, including some nearby, who have recently copied it. It's something we can be very proud of. Anybody that's been to any of our meetings where we discuss road plans and sees the encyclopedic knowledge of our city engineering department, the fact that you can, I bet you, you could tell Todd Zelinski, our city engineer, what street you live on, and he can probably tell you where the pothole is. It's that deep of knowledge because they catalog them every year. So from a Livonia perspective, what we can control, I think we're actually doing a remarkable job. From a Wayne County perspective, I can tell you, we are a squeaky wheel. I'm copied, as my fellow council members are, on many of the emails that our administration sends. Sometimes it's initiated by us to Wayne County, particularly about Merriman. And Merriman, by the way, is on the cusp of getting fixed, at least in the 5 Mile area where it's really bad. And that's a direct result of us continuing to press on Wayne County of being a squeaky wheel. I'll just add, to my reading time, when that remote comes up, we should read it.
Thank you. Mr. Perez, same question?
Okay, if you go to my site, PerezforLivoniaCityCouncil dot com, on my site, there is a link that you can go to. And on this link, there are nine ideas for road material that can be used, including bendable cement, carbon fiber in bridges that could last over 100 years, permeable concrete, old tires and asphalt, recyclable plastic and asphalt. And one of them is actually including organic material called pig poop. But if you also want to take a look in the magazine, City of Livonia, there's a list of all the streets that are scheduled to be fixed. So it gives you an idea that we are ahead of the game. And I know it's going to cost a little bit of money, but we'll have to negotiate. And that's what we can do best as a council. Thank you.
The next question, we will begin with Mr. Capola. Are there particular issues that led you to run for city council?
I would say, particular, no. I think generally, like I said in my opening statement, I think the city is very well-run. The issue, I think, from my perspective, is that there's going to be a couple of city council members will be turning out. So you're going to lose that level of knowledge and experience, and that creates a gap. We've seen that locally. We've seen that county. We've seen that statewide. We've seen that even on some of the federal side. So from my, what I bring is some experience, being on the Zoni Board of Appeals for four and a half years as chairman. I've got some experience on how you deal with difficult and sometimes controversial issues, how you work to consensus, how you help bring solutions that work for everybody. That's what I think, that's why I'm running. I want to make sure that the city continues to run well, that opportunities are taken advantage of when they are available, but that things are kept well as they are today.
Mr. King?
Yeah, a couple of things. I have so many ideas, I'm going to jump on a little bit of what Gerald said. I live around the city, and I see things like the lighting in the library, old fluorescent fixtures. Why are we using LED? 8% savings in energy. Ford offers hybrid police SUVs and fuel savings of over $3,000 annually. We have, are all our service buses, could be hybrid, electric, or biofuel. I have hundreds and hundreds of suggestions. When I was on the school board, I had put a list together, and they saved millions of dollars. These are common-sense solutions. And one jumps out with me, and when I was on the school board, offer record mechanical services to the city and districts using our tow truck and in-house mechanics. And in fact, that's exactly what we're doing today. LPS mechanics are tuning up and fixing city buses. That was my idea, along with hundreds of others, that they implemented after I was gone. So I'm running really to be that Russian eyes looking at old problems.
Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I think your original question was, what prompted me to run for council? I'm often asked this. I think a lot of people assume that people that are in politics started out with a grand plan and get involved in politics. Maybe that's true for some. It certainly wasn't the case for me. I've just always been somebody who's rolled up my sleeves and gotten involved where I am, whether it was my neighborhood, it was in the schools. My involvement in Livonia formally started with Education Alliance, a Livonia Chamber and Schools partnership back in 2003 or '04. Was involved in Livonia Marketing Consortium. I was president of my neighborhood. I could list a number of other things, but ultimately, I was appointed to the Planning Commission, and it reached a point where it was like, whoa, like, it makes sense for me to run for council. And so it was just a natural extension of caring about my community and getting involved and wanting to be a part of the solution. I've thoroughly enjoyed the last four years. It's got its challenges. It's got a lot of joys. And I just enjoy being in that decision-making mindset. My favorite part of it is frankly how it's widened my network to meet so many of you. So that's what got me involved in council, and that's what I'm hoping I can under your trust to do it for another four years.
Mr. Perez?
People ask me, why do you want to run for city council? I tell them, I feel that I can make a difference. I want to be able to do what is in the best interest for the citizens, not what I personally think they want. I know with my background of work and community service activities that I have been involved in, that I will be able to do what is in their favor. I will always keep an open door of communications with the citizens of Livonia.
Thank you. Mr. Weber, same question?
Okay, yeah. I just want to quickly say that on the back, on the road thing, we could limit the trucks, and we should stop granting waivers to people like St. Mary's with those dumb, double gravel haulers. You know, basically, the most important thing that you need to know about me is I believe in cutting taxes. You don't hear these candidates, not these candidates per se, but I've heard talk about the taxes are low, and we're going to keep taxes low, and compared to other communities, it's low, low, low. But the thing is, nobody talks about tax cuts except Gerald Perez and me. And I talked about this four years ago when I ran for mayor. And if we cut the budget by six to eight million, we can give each household about $100 tax cut, and that would include fire and police that don't live in the city. And that would just be for starters.
Thank you. Our next question is, and we'll be starting with Mr. King. What are the biggest challenges facing Livonia's council members?
Well, I think what you hear him talking about is first responders and how tough it is to keep first responders in Livonia. I would like to talk about maybe a DBDC hybrid plan, which is defined benefit divine contribution. I know they're talking about that. And I would like to talk about incentives to keep first responders living in the city that they work in. So few of them live here. As a teacher in Detroit, I could buy a house at 50% off, and that's a huge incentive for somebody to live in a community. So, I mean, I'm not saying that that's what we would use, but I'm thinking that's one thing we should talk about. The other thing that's really facing the council is the infrastructure. We talked about the roads, but there's water, there's sewers. That is, this is an old community, and like all old communities, much of our infrastructure has passed its lifespan. So we're going to have to come up with a coordinated attack to stop.
Well, I'm going to sound like a broken record on this, but it's so fundamental to any position like this. Is the number one challenge for me always is just to stay constantly vigilant in keeping city running efficiently. There is always an opportunity to spend more money, and there's often many good things to spend money on. But I think it's important that we keep government limited to its goal and that we keep the costs down as best we can while providing excellent services. So that's always my number one priority, even when it's going well. It's been mentioned, infrastructure, that's the second thing I jotted down here. The water infrastructure is a constant battle for us. I'm very proud that we just passed a 0.2% water increase a few weeks ago, which is exceptional. It's reflective of a lot of hard work on the city. And then we have some buildings that are, that we're going to have to be replacing as well, and that's a challenge we have coming. It's been mentioned, the first responders, I suspect. I wouldn't be surprised if we have an opportunity to talk about that again. But we do have a problem right now retaining police officers and fire department personnel. That's a challenge. And then finally, the master plan that just got accepted. That's something that's going to be a challenge and a fun challenge for us to begin implementing.
Mr. Perez?
Could you repeat the question?
Certainly. What are the biggest challenges facing Livonia's council members?
I think some of these actually would be, the challenges might be facing the community as a whole. And to me, the opioid crisis is a very, very major one. We've had two meetings in the city. One was at Stevenson High School. And there's a lot of people that have died from this. Just in the United States, over 115 people die each day from opioid overdoses. And within the state of Michigan itself, 11.4 million prescriptions for painkillers are written in Michigan. Annual cost is $115 billion for prescription opioid use disorders in the USA. So I think to save our youth, we can use these organizations to save our youth, Growth Works, and Naranam, and N.A., to get these people involved. Or like anything.
Mr. Weber?
Well, yeah, you know, getting back to the taxes thing, another thing we should stop doing is when you do home improvements on your home, your taxes go up, so we should stop doing that. Then there's another thing, it's like the small home loan program, like, you know, like they do little home repairs on your home, and you have to have life insurance, I mean, housing insurance, so they should eliminate that. But what people aren't talking about, is we have an abortion clinic in Livonia. And there's four people in our city government that are running, and they snookered them. They snookered this past the Planning Committee. And we need to get our city attorney to write some legal briefs and close down this place because they snookered us into coming into the city. And we have the slogan about family first and all this stuff. And like, now we're killing babies, so, you know, this is unacceptable.
Mr. Capola?
I think the biggest challenge facing council, you know, looking at overall their responsibility, is keeping the costs in check while continuing to provide a high level of services and environment in the city. I think there's a couple that you brought up by Mr. King and Mr. Barr. Police and fire, that's a real problem. We're losing police and fire because there's other communities that are doing things and offering incentives that make you promises really that they can't probably fulfill in the long term. And how do you compete against that? That's going to be pretty tough. But I think we can come up with a solution, I thought, you know, what Mr. King suggested, the hybrid. We've got to start looking at being creative with alternatives for that. Infrastructure is another big one. It's aging. It's going to start costing a lot more money. We need to maintain, and we need to repair, and be creative in the ways that we do those repairs to keep those costs in check.
Thank you. Mr. Barr? During the public comment period at a recent Livonia City Council meeting, two council members voiced their opposition to a business coming to Livonia and encouraged residents to disrupt the facility's business. Do you think that is a proper action for an elected official? If not, how would you address such a situation if you were re-elected?
Can you give me more context for the question, because I'm not sure of the situation you're talking about?
I just said, during the public comment period at a recent Livonia City Council meeting.
Okay, well, without knowing the specific that that questioner is asking about, I would say in general, we want to be a city that rules out the right carpet for businesses. I think we can do that. As during my time on the Planning Commission and my time on city council, I've been privileged to take part in what we call rapid response teams, where we have a really exceptional relationship with investors that want to come in the city, where we bring them in ahead of time with a small room to try to answer their questions so there's no surprises when they come through the approval process. We've been proactive during my time on council, trying to be strategic in our policies to make sure that there's a consistent approach so that investors, before they spend their time and money looking to come here, know what they're going to get. I think investors are always looking for a consistent policy so that they know what to expect. They don't want surprises. I think we do a good job of that. And I think the fact that we've got the lowest vacancy in our investor quarter than we've ever had, and we've got rapid development happening all over cities, I think that's a success. So I think our city does a great job of attracting businesses, and I think we should continue to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Perez?
In reference to your question, I don't think I would encourage a disruption. I think that the council should be neutral. Not being a council, I believe that we should go out into the community and surrounding the communities and possibly even when we're on a vacation somewhere, where we see businesses that are out there, and try to invite them into our community so we can grow. Otherwise, in that, I would not encourage disruption.
Mr. Weber?
Well, I don't know, like guessing, I think that this relates to the abortion clinic. And actually, I think what we should be doing is we should be sponsoring protests out there. there, even by the city, and, hey, you know, I'll sign up for a shift. And like, you know, I remember a few years ago, there was a Hooters that wanted to come into Livonia, and oh, boy, you know, the moral indignation about that, like, and like, that's like a PG-rated restaurant, there's nothing that big about that. And like, here we were, like, thumbs down on Hooters, and we allowed an abortion clinic to Livonia. And I'll tell you another thing, too. There's been some strange things going on in Livonia with that Livonia Franklin teacher, and there was a body found in Bicentennial Park about a month ago. And so who knows if Livonia's coming under a little judgment here? You know, the thing is, we got snookered, but now we have it, and now what are we going to do about it? Are we going to let it stay here or not?
Thank you, Mr. Capola.
Let me specifically answer the question and provide a little more color to it. First of all, I don't think any government official, in its capacity as a government official, should be opposing a legal performing business. That's, they should be allowed to have their own personal convictions, and they can operate on those personal convictions on their own time, but as a city official, I shouldn't do that. That being said, any, like I said, any legal performing business should be, and as far as I'm aware of, is welcomed in this community, and they should be. And when I say legal and conforming, they have to be legal, a legal business that has, a legal performing business has, being able to perform in legal business. And conforming means that they've got to conform to all our rules, our zoning rules, our business licensing rules, all those other rules. As long as they fit that, then they'll be supported, and they have been and continue to be supported by this city.
Mr. King.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. During the public comment period at a recent Livonia City Council meeting, two council members voiced their opposition to a business coming to Livonia and encouraged residents to disrupt the facility's business. Do you think that is a proper action for an elected official? If not, how would you address such a situation?
No, I do not think that is proper. I think that's talking about the Planned Parenthood clinic that's in my neighborhood, it's right down the street from where I live. And I think it's important, you know, that we don't throw inflammatory language out there. That is not an abortion clinic. I have visited that facility. It provides health care for men and women, for underprivileged men and women who can't afford health care. I've been inside the facility. Planned Parenthood's been in Livonia for many years. It just relocated, basically, is what happened. And I agree with you 100% of any legal business that conforms to the ordinances, which that one does. If it was providing a different service, it would, there would be different rules applied. And so I want people to know, we don't have an abortion clinic in Livonia.
Thank you. Mr. Perez, next question. Livonia offers only limited transportation services to seniors, disabled residents, and to-work rides from Smart bus stops. Would you support reconsideration of opting into Smart to provide greater transportation opportunities to and from Livonia? Why or why not?
Good question. I know that we had voted on that from before, and it was voted down. I think would be something that would have to come again to a vote. I don't think I would commit to one way or another right now. I think it's something that the citizens of the city of Livonia should decide, not me personally. I want what is best for the citizens.
Mr. Weber.
Could you repeat that question?
Livonia offers only limited transportation service to seniors, disabled residents, and to-work rides from Smart bus stops. Would you support reconsideration of opting into Smart to provide greater transportation opportunities to and from Livonia? Why or why not?
No, I'm glad that we're not doing that anymore. I think Livonia does have, like, a senior bus transit. You know, the only thing that I wish that we would do, though, is that, like, you know, without raising taxes, I wish we could, you know, provide a little bit more of that. And then, although I do like Steve, I will disagree with him on that about the Planned Parenthood thing. They do do, you know, birth control and advice and things like that, but they do, you know, advise towards abortion clinics, too. And like, oh, you know, yeah, that's my, that's my, and the thing is, you know, we pay too many taxes as it is. You know, last year, they raised our taxes for the school grade college, and now these criminals on the school board, they're putting up another thing. You know, it's only going to cost you a couple hundred dollars more in taxes for the public schools, and it's like, everybody takes a bite out of you, so, you know, like, quit raising taxes, let's start cutting taxes.
Mr. Capola.
Yeah, my recollection is correct, and it's been, I think it's been a while since we opted out. The analysis was done where the benefit that was provided by the Smart system in Livonia was not nearly comparative to the cost it was to the citizens. And from my perspective at that time, that was true. Things have changed in Livonia. We've got, you know, Amazon's here now, which brings a lot of people in. We've got the new liquor distribution centers coming in. Things have changed a little bit. So, you know, we can look at that. I don't know, I'm not sure if I'm prepared to commit to something. We have to do a cost-benefit analysis. If it makes, if it benefits the community and the cost is reasonable, there's a social cost, somewhat of a social cost, and I understand it's not dollar-for-dollar. But if there's, if it makes sense to do, we'll do it. I'm not sure it will make sense to do it, but I'd be happy to, I'm open to looking at it.
Mr. King.
No, I don't think we should go into Smart. We have LPTS, the one about the transit system. I would like to improve that system, though, have those buses be hybrid electric or biofuel. And the biofuel they're doing in Redford, the students are actually making biofuel and they're using it in their buses. I also think often those buses are empties, and maybe we could use something more size-appropriate, maybe get something smaller to do those. With the remaining time, I want to talk about something Gerald said, the opioid crisis. He's right. We all know that, you probably know someone who's lost someone because of that. And it's been proven that medicinal cannabis is a great way to fight the opioid crisis. And as it is right now, we can't get medicinal marijuana in our community. I would like to target our worst long-empty commercial building and put it as a medical cannabis business, returning it to the tax rolls and helping patients indeed. I think Livonia deserves that.
Mr. Barr.
Yeah, I think the last time I heard this question raised, actually, was in this forum four years ago, so I'll give you the same answer that I gave you then. You know, I lived for 11 years in a house that was literally within sight of those Smart buses going by every day, and I used to joke to my family, "Look, there's another empty Smart bus," because they were almost always empty. Our city at that time, for that reason, because people were not using it, opted out and replaced it with a system that cost the city half of what we were paying to be in the Smart system, and is the system that's actually used. So, you know, you can always be open to looking at things again, but based on the analysis that was done and our experience with the Smart system already, I don't think it would be a responsible use of our taxpayer dollars to opt back into that.
All right, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Weber again. Livonia has, and this will be our last question. Livonia has upgraded street lights to LED-style lights. What other energy conservation ideas do you have if you win a seat on the city council?
Well, I have to admit, I have no idea on that, so I'm going to do a Sarah Palin here. I think, you know, one of the things we should do is, we should give full hours to all our libraries. You know, they've been sitting idle now for too long, like that, the Sandberg Noble. And another thing about the Detroit water, this is a problem that hasn't gone away. They have regular increases on our water. I'm paying $90 a quarter, which is ridiculous, and I don't even do anything, I don't water the water, like that. And that new little thing that they set up with the representatives, like, they're just puppets. So we should have our city attorney file some legal briefs. I can help write it out, he doesn't help me do, like, break up the monopoly, and it's like taxation without representation, and the pricing is unfair. I mean, we're surrounded by all these lakes of water. If you go move to Indiana, like, they charge a heart of anything for water.
Mr. Capola.
Yeah, I think a lot of times when we look at these energy-efficient programs, you'll find that they don't work economically unless there's incentives. So the LED lights that were put up, there were probably incentives that made it work. Yes, you save money, but the cost generally doesn't offset the savings that you have. You have to have incentives that you get either from the state or the federal government. Same thing with solar panels. I was in the solar panel industry for two and a half years with a company that went bankrupt because solar panels are not efficient, not to the level that they work right now without significant amount of support and subsidy. I think there's going to be opportunities. I don't think they're available right now, but we should be open and look at those. And I'm always happy to do those things, but again, without it making economic sense, I mean, it's always kind of sexy to do these really cool things because you can say that you've done them, but when you do the math on them, they don't work.
Mr. King.
Wow, I couldn't disagree more. Wow. Yeah, it is sexy saving money, especially public tax dollars. I find that very sexy. Yeah, LED has been proven over the last two decades to save tremendous, I've done it in my own house, I'm sure you have, too. I use a tankless hot water heater, and I save 40% on energy. There are so many innovative things. They're doing it all over the country, all over the world. So to say that, wow, LED, really? LED is some newfangled thing that doesn't pay off? Look, go to Home Depot and see all the LED lights that are on. I think we should be heating our pool water, which is the most expensive thing we have to do, is heat pool water. And we should be doing it with rooftop solar. All of China heats their domestic hot water with Fatco, hot rooftop solar. There are so many things that we could be doing to make this city greener. Our neighbors are doing it. We, there's no reason we can't do it. You need the right people on the council to make it happen.
Mr. Barr.
Yeah, I'm all about energy conservation. I believe God put us on this earth to tend his garden, so I'm always looking for ways to reduce waste and conserve energy. And I do think there's, for ideas that are truly energy conservation ideas, they do make financial sense. When they don't make financial sense, that's your first clue that they're probably not energy conserving. The LED light example, that was a total win for the city. There were no incentives needed for that. The cost savings that, I think those things paid back, started paying back within nine months or something like that. We couldn't do that fast enough, and we've been rolling them out across the city as a result. I think that's great. Just like we're always looking for money-saving and energy-conserving ideas in our homes, I think our department has, and our city's doing the same thing, and should continue to do so. I'll just give you one quick example. At our meeting Monday night, there was a guy that came up here during audience communication and asked why we put return envelopes in the water bills for people that have automatic payments already set up. It was a great idea, I wish I'd thought of it. And you know what? We're looking into that. Now, if there's other issues involved, it may not make sense, but we're looking at it. If you guys have ideas, bring them to us.
Mr. Perez.
Dealing with energy-saving ideas, just go to Madonna University, they have the solar panel project all set up already, and everything is working. As far as how much money we're saving, 2018 Mayor Wright said that we had saved $282,000 just by going to LED light. Some people might say that we don't have the money to fund some of these projects, but according to Mayor Kirksey, in 2014, with our cell tower lease, we had over $290,000. And according to Mayor Kirksey, again, in our city of Livonia oil wells, in 2014, had accumulated $450,000. So we've got the money to fund some of these projects.
All right, well, we will now start with our closing statements, and we'll start, as I said, in reverse order, so Mr. Perez, you have one minute for a closing statement.
Thanks again for having me here. I retired from AT&amp;T in 1998. During my employment of 30 years with corporate business experience with AT&amp;T, 24 of those years were in management, whereas a supervisor, and six of the 24 years were as the administrator of employee activities in the community service organizations. I retired in 2017 from the licensed daycare that my wife and I ran and operated in Livonia since 1994. I am a former board member of the United Foundations and Friends of the Rouge. I currently work for the city of Livonia as a vehicle maintenance officer, and since 1994, as a Livonia Police Reserve Officer. I also work at Madonna University and have been since 2016. I'm also involved in many of the, I used to be involved in a lot of the junior football leagues and things like that. I was a coach and a manager. I believe a lot of these experiences made me qualified to become a Livonia council member, and please visit my website so I can talk to you more about these things.
Thank you. Mr. Barr.
Well, first, thanks to the Louisiana voters for coordinating this event again. Thanks for all you for being here. This is a fantastic turnout, I'm delighted that you're all here. It's common at any level of government to hear politicians make bold statements about programs or ideas that they're going to try to implement. That's all along ago, but I very purposely try to focus on principles so you can understand how I make decisions. The reality is, we don't know everything that's coming to us in the next four years. And so what I'm hoping is that you, as citizens, will look for people that you can trust the best representing you for whatever comes in front of us. That's why I think citizen engagement is so incredibly important. Good government begins with, depends on, citizens taking personal accountability for the community and holding the representatives accountable. And I welcome that accountability. For those of you that don't know, for example, if you follow my Councilman Scott Barr Facebook page, I report on every council meeting, including explaining the rationale for my votes. I welcome the transparency, I welcome the accountability. You can also go to scottbarr.org, and you can see detailed accounts of some of the critical decisions that I've been part of for the last four years. So thanks again for being here. I'll be available afterwards for questions, and I hope I can count your vote on August 6th.
Mr. King.
All right, thanks LWV and everybody for showing up. 60 seconds is tough to really get to know people, so get a pen out. Vote steveking.blogspot.com, stevekingmichigan.us. I have newspaper articles on there, I have questions from when I ran in the past. And what's interesting is some of the same questions from years ago are relevant today. It shows how we really have moved forward. Something I wanted to mention, the lease, I always hear that all the buildings are leased. I drive through this city, I saw five new lease signs today. There are lease signs everywhere. There are empty buildings everywhere. I don't know who is categorizing this stuff. We need to deal with these empty buildings before we do other projects. We got to give incentives for people to repurpose them. You know, I gave you my resume earlier, but I didn't just sit on these boards, I did things. On the school board, I was the only one to challenge $30,000 in shipping charges, the only one. Saved huge money for the district and changed the culture so we never overpaid again. That's what's important. Need somebody on the board to change the culture.
Mr. Capola.
Well, thank you to the Louisiana voters for organizing this tonight. It was a great forum to be able to meet and talk with the voters. We were asked several important questions, but a minute is not nearly enough time to fully communicate positions on these matters. What I'll do is I'll more comprehensively respond to these on my website, so go to my website, citizenstoelectrecapola.com, my Facebook page on the next week, and I'll expand on some of my answers on that. Hope you'll take the time to go on there and check it out. What I can convey to you with limited time I have remaining is that these important issues cannot be effectively addressed without an experienced team that has a successful track record of making difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions. I have that track record in both the public and the private sectors. In any case, I have a broader and deeper track record than most of my opponents here tonight, which I believe differentiates me from this field. I hope you will agree. Thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to the purpose of serving you and ask for your vote on August 6th and again in November. Thank you.
Mr. Weber.
I think Livonia should open up a no-fee healthcare clinic, the way Westland has. I also have a Facebook page. I'm actually starting a new party called the 13 Points Party. I'm going to try to read this really fast. And it's, the centerpiece is the 13 points of well-being. Every person should have a realistic expectation of realizing his basic rights. Number one, livable income. Number two, affordable housing. Number three, liberty from undue taxation. Number four, access to adequate healthcare. Number five, quality education. Number six, adequate legal representation. Number seven, ability and safety. Number eight, right to defend oneself. Number nine, freedom of religion. Number 10, freedom of assembly. Number 11, the right to pursue happiness. Number 12, adequate food and water. Number 13, protection and guarantee of civil rights, including freedom of thought. And as you can see, I'm intelligent, I'm a creative person, and I'd like to see eight more people deserve this more than me.
I'm sorry, Tom. All right. I would like to thank the five city council candidates sitting up here this evening who participated in tonight's forum. There will be a short break in between these forums to reset for the next set of council candidates. And would the remaining six city council candidates please sit up forward so we can get you seated and make a summary of your thoughts?
Thank you.
I don't think you have to start this. I'm just going to move it to the head.
Thank you.
I don't think.
Okay, 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 I'll do my best.
No, that's fine. Yeah, we could trace.
I'm going to stand down.